Monday morning shadow.
Yeah, the scruffy look.
And they all had their collars turned up.
All of the savings they thought they'd get?
As Magnum P. Island.
Are we switching the student? Is John going first?
John is going first.
Welcome to the December 18th version of the Litchfield School Board. Please rise for the pledge leaders.
Pledge allegiance to our United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Summary of non-public actions from December 4th, 2013. Mr. York made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of December 4th as written. Mr. Miller seconded. Motion carried 5-0-0. We have a boys' basketball fundraiser?
Yes. I'd like to speak about the proposal that the boys' basketball team has. Basically, it's every player, JV and varsity, will shoot 100 free throws. They'll have sponsors. Every player will be asked to get at least three sponsors. They can come in at any level. They suggest 50 cents per made free throw.
At the floor?
Or more. Yeah.
50 cents at the floor? You can't go on?
Same. You can get in deep, you know. And so the date is flexible. Coach would like to do it if possible over the holidays where, you know, because it's going to take some time for every kid to shoot 100 free throws and calculate it. And then, you know, if their sponsors want to come see it, it would be great. His goal is to raise this money so they can fund a trip to Kentucky next year to play in a tournament, a holiday tournament in Kentucky. He did it with, he's done it with several teams, these coaches in the past. Most recently, when he was coaching Bedford, they went there. They had a chance to tour the facilities, academic and athletic, at the University of Kentucky, and even had a chance to spend some time with Coach Calipari, who's, you know, by all accounts, one of the better basketball coaches. Memory.
So would the seniors be basically raising money this year for the team to go next year?
That is exactly right. Yes, they would. He doesn't have a lot of seniors, by the way. It's a very young team. Yep.
Any questions? Coach Panchin?
I think it would be great if that's the desire, that he might want to involve the eighth grade. Any eighth graders, or encourage them to come up and participate and do their, if they're going to be able to go. Because I'd hate to see it be a one-year event where the seniors raised money, or senior, however many, and the eighth graders come in as freshmen, don't need to do anything, and get to go. It might just be worthwhile to see if, that would be my suggestion.
Is it strictly the varsity team, or?
He's going to have JV and varsity both shoot.
No, but on the, to the, on the trip, just the varsity?
Next year, in the past, it depends on how much money he raises, of course, but I think he's done it both ways in the past. The tournament would be just for varsity play. I do know that.
I'll make a motion to approve the foul shot fundraiser for the boys' basketball team.
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Post? Stain? Motion carries 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Watch a little gym rest.
So we have the student councils here from all three schools, I believe, or at least representatives from all three schools. And I believe they're getting recognition for their work in the Litchfield Community Soup Kitchen through the, they led the effort to raise almost-
Do we want Leo Ryan to do a, step up to the microphone and do a description of the brief explanation to folks?
Probably do a much better job than me anyway, so that's a good idea.
Alright, so basically what this was, was for one week, we asked members of the, our school and members of LMS and GMS to donate canned items, personal hygiene items that we would donate to the Litchfield Food Pantry. I know that Campbell High School was able to raise almost 2,000 items.
1,800 something.
LMS was in the high hundreds and Lu-GMS was also in the high hundreds. So-
Six to 700 for each of them.
Yeah.
Excellent. Fantastic.
So, and they always appreciate our donations. They're always getting low on food when this time of year comes around.
Especially around the holidays.
So it helped out people in our community.
Excellent. Well, we have certificates of recognition for each of the student councils. Are you guys the reps from?
Campbell, yeah.
Did you run from GMS?
Could I also point out that we have faculty representatives who work with the student councils, from CHS, Mr. McDonough. From LMS, we have both, Ms. Irvine and Ms. Silo, who are here this evening with their- Do we have someone from GMS, the person who looks after student council, or is there?
Is it you, Ms. Chostow? You student council?
I'm just here to cheer on my alumni.
So, LMS and GMS, alright, so look at, at these two here, and you will see in front of you as high school reps. I think the two most involved student reps that we've had at the board level in a while, who've done a wonderful job of presenting and talking and arguing and all sorts of other wonderful things, and I think they've contributed greatly. So please continue to contribute in your school, and if this is something that you enjoy, please continue as you progress from GMS to LMS and up to the high school. Your participation and your leadership is appreciated and valued. Thank you very much.
How soon is connect the next two weeks off?
Actually, not a full two weeks.
Almost three. We don't meet for two weeks.
Thanks, folks. And it just goes to show, it just goes to show that our leaders have good judgment, because now they're leaving and not being polite and staying. Thank you, folks.
Thanks.
Anyone have any correspondence?
We'll put it up on the bulletin. Yeah, I want to get a picture of him.
Only from our friendly, Mr. Pascoochi.
Oh, that's right. Did he, let me see that.
It was our option to read it.
It was an option to read it, okay. I think you basically stressed that-
Have the attorney.
Have the attorney look over the default budget and-
Yes, it was one of those, I'm glad we're all getting along together, but we're going to beat you over the head if you don't do it our way, our emails, so.
What I thought was interesting was, ask your attorney if he's ready to defend it. I'm thinking, he's getting paid by the hour.
He can talk for hours. That's right.
Didn't the Budget Committee cut our legal fees?
They did. We're in good shape. We're fine.
We did also have a, a non-public correspondence.
Yes.
Oh, yes. You did. That's probably all we can say.
You guys are handling that?
Yes, I think it's scheduled-
You guys are handling that? Oh, Don, the correspondence the school board got that needed to be handled by you two?
There was also the sing-along at GMS tomorrow, Friday at 8:45.
That's you. That's right, yes.
Not that I want to go sing, but it might be interesting to hear some of it.
No, the staff sings. I will be with my third Christmas time.
Well, they're expecting us to be there to sing along.
Anytime somebody says sing-along, that usually involves-
We were invited to witness it.
I could go get Mrs. Johnstone back, because I talked to her about it.
She organized it.
And she says, oh no, if you're there, you're up on stage.
I'm busy.
I'm going to reconsider. You don't want me singing.
I said, put me in the back around the curtain. We'll be good.
Yeah. Be at the baritone section.
Except that microphone hanging down all over the place now. Yeah, you dog PTO.
I think that was it for correspondence. Approval of draft minutes from 12:11?
I'll make a motion to approve.
What? I have two changes. Line 100. Just a minor wordsmithing in that case. Dr. I would say it was better, better characterization to say, Dr. Crocker indicated that he did not favor procedural changes to GPA calculations this late in the year. And on page four, line 218. Dr. Crocker indicated that he believes the actual reduction will be significantly less than that. I'm not sure I gave a figure, just that I, I said, you know, I think Frank agreed as well, that that's what we had at this point in time that we expected to change.
Just a change on 96.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It says that I commented that the policies are superseded by the handbook. I said they're augmented by the handbook.
Oh, augmented. Okay.
Any more updates?
Make a motion to approve them as amended.
Check it. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Post? Stain? Motion carries 5-0-0. Community forum.
Good evening, Levin Perry Court. Jason Grant. With regard to correspondence, I sent you something, which I thought was an interesting take on something. It was from Cornerstone Policy, I think, who's, who's a lobbyist group, you know, they, they take positions in the state. But it was particularly well done, I thought, with regard to some of the language the DOE is proposing to change in ED 306, which is quite concerning and/or could build upon or cause districts to incur additional expenses, which in the end is okay if it betters our education. But if it's a 28A, which is a funding problem, in my opinion, whenever we don't take position as boards, regardless of what district, that push back whenever there's a 28A conflict, especially one that's pretty clear, we then tacitly approve of, okay, just do whatever you want, we'll always pay for it. Because the state never ponies up the funds in the end. They just say, oh, this is inadequate education, now you have to go fund it. Well, it's my opinion that boards should look at these things seriously and say, we may not win in the end, but we need to start digging in our heels a bit and making those cases, you know, and partnering with other boards where you can to try to influence at least the legislature, either through the New Hampshire School Board Association or, or, you know, whatever fashion, to kind of push back on the DOE, because they are not, and I mean, in New Hampshire, education is, is one of those rights we have, where DOE has usurped it greatly, in my opinion, where they make mandates that haven't been approved by the legislature. And so with the New Hampshire DOE being 75% funded by the US DOE, my concern is that the interests of New Hampshire come secondarily to the US DOE. And so, again, I would, I would hope that you guys look at those things and, you know, and push back. Lastly, I'm looking at the default budget, which you guys I think will be voting on tonight, and I'm going to make one last pitch. I see, again, total salaries part of your play plan. I would imagine that that's the, the total increase in salaries for non-LEA, non-union increases in salary, correct? Total, worst-case scenario? No?
No.
That would include what?
I would have to look up the details, Jason, and get it back to you. But it's, it's, they have to do a position that were brought into the district after budget ratification, budget approval.
Could also be grade changes.
It could also.
For, for-
If there was some, for, for falls, yeah.
For, for which staff?
Different track. I'm sorry?
I was, I couldn't hear.
That would be if, you might have had some people in the district that went due to educational credentials to a higher track.
Teachers. Right. Right, that's what, that's what I missed. Okay. Certainly, certainly. And so there's a portion of that that would be that, which would be contractual. And then there's a portion of that, whereas you bring additional staff online, that's not, that, in my opinion, is not a default budget position. Even though you've chosen to do that, it's not the appropriation that was designated last year.
Unless required by law, then it would have to include it. If it was an IEP-related position.
That's right. That's different, right. But I understood the-
R E P-related positions.
Understood. But that's, that's kind of what I'm saying, is any additional staff, that would be. And so any portion of that number that doesn't fit that, I make the argument doesn't belong there. So even though those folks who are on steps or who would get an increase this year, those aren't guaranteed. Those are if you satisfactorily perform. And so that makes it a belief that someone will achieve that, that pay raise. Well, again, that's not a default budget issue. The default budget issue is status quo. So even though you have a pay plan, nothing guarantees that they will achieve a satisfactory performance rating to proceed to the next step. So then that becomes a non-default budget item, because it's a, it's not, it's not a guaranteed thing. It's not a contract. It's not, it's like the LEA contract, where someone does grow because of education. You're required to pay that. You are not required to give raises, even though there's a pay plan involved. And so that is not a default expenditure. It becomes a proposed expenditure. So again, those, those are the kind of things I'm, I was trying to get at tonight with the default budget. Frank, I would, I would request a breakdown of what that number does, when you, when you have a chance, obviously. I'm sure this week you're busy and Christmas is coming, but at some point. One wouldn't think it with the snow, right? But please, I'd like to see the difference in where that is, because obviously, I can't tell at this moment what I object to, because it's, they should be broken apart between-
You objected to something, though, right?
What's that?
You objected to something. It's not your wife.
Well, no, I'm sure I know what it is, but you can't tell from what that number is. And if you can tie it back to all legally binding ones, then so be it. If you say that is entirely that, so be it. But from what I hear, there are some pay plan folks going up on step in there. And that's what I'm trying to find out, what that number is. Thank you.
To the chair, I can tell you that there are no step increases in that figure. I can give you the 248, 960. It's comprised of 147,101, which were positions IEP-driven, par educators that were brought in last year after the budget was approved. And 2015, the new appropriation is one full-time special ed teacher and four par professionals that are, again, are required by IEP modifications totaling 101, 859, which gives that line a total increase of 248, 960.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I told you I had to look it up. Just had to find it.
It was awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more community input?
Actually, I, I will thank Jason for sending us that from the Cornerstone, because I personally respect Cornerstone. And I have not had a chance to read it yet, but I will be going through that.
Superintendent's comments?
Just thanks to the folks at GMS, LMS, and CHS for the recognition piece tonight. You know, having students at the board meeting and teachers at a board meeting, to me, is, is significant, because the board has oversight of, of the education of students in the town. And it's an opportunity for parents and students to see the board, and the board to have, and the community to showcase for them a lot of the wonderful work that occurs. So something that we hope to continue. And I'm especially looking for opportunities to have LMS and GMS students up to recognize some of the work. It may be a little late. I think we have the, the LMS girls volleyball team who went undefeated again this year. So I didn't find out about that result until a little late, you know, slightly a minute in January. I'm sorry?
I think they might have lost one game.
Did they? They were the champions again this year.
They were champions, but they may have lost one.
So, you know, there's a lot of good stuff going on in the district athletically, with respect to the fine arts, with respect to academics. And I think we've done a good job of, of recognizing those students and those efforts of staff at, at the high school. And we're just trying to broaden that out. So if anyone is listening out there and can think of things that are deserving of the board recognition, please feel free to email me. Thank you.
Speaking of students, was the, the students talking about the GPA calculation, was that ever resolved at the, at the school level?
I believe that the process is ongoing. I've met with, as part of, you know, normal meetings with principals, I had a conversation with Principal Rothaus, and I think she's, you know, weighing in on, on how she wants to proceed. So I'm satisfied that, that things are, you know, progressing and, you know, I believe that the, the high school will make a good decision.
School board comments?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, we met, it's a little blurred, but LMS had their concert here at Campbell High School and, which was great. I actually got to hear my son play with a group, so it sounded a little different. And then last week, we were at GMS for their, their recorder and their chorus. And that was, again, it's just phenomenal to see these, these kids in these groups, and they keep getting larger and larger and filling up the auditoriums. And, and, you know, at GMS, it was, even though it was only the third or third and fourth graders, I think it was, you know, it was packed. I mean, there, you know, it wasn't an empty seat. I mean, it was, it was, it was just jam-packed in there. And it was, it was, it's very good to see the teachers and the, and the kids as they participate in these, the music and things. And I know my family went to the play here at CHS for the LHS, and they went on Thursday night. And, you know, they had a great time, thought it was a great, a great play and everything like that. So again, I, my hats off to the, to the arts programs at all three of our schools, because I think that, you know, they're, I think sometimes they get left behind. We do fund a lot for athletics and, and I'm always pushing that we need to fund more on their aspects, because it's a different group of kids at times. And, you know, and they're just, we just need to encourage their, their talents in, in those, in those areas and stuff, so.
A lot of grade five and six students in the LMS play this year, which bodes well for down the line. And my understanding is the first time, either the first time that they've done it at the high school auditorium or the first time in a while. And the feedback that I got was that it was a positive experience that they would like to replicate. And, you know, I think we can make that happen again next year.
I think GMS may need to move into CHS auditorium, because I think if, if our friendly fire marshal had driven by at any point in time, we might have been in violation of a few, a few rules, so.
Any more school board remarks?
On the theme of the Make a Difference Week, where they filled up the, the food pantry, there was two other things, I think, that went on at CHS. There was a coke drive, I think, by the Key Club. And then there's a relatively new group called Campbell Athletic Leaders. That's a group of kids that are trying to advance different things in the athletics area, and they were running Toys for Tots. You know, you bring a toy, you could get into the basketball game for free. Doesn't necessarily seem like a great plan. If you could get in for three bucks, you could bring a toy. But the last I knew, they had three completely full boxes that they were going to deliver to Toys for Tots, and two out of the three games were snowed out. The last day for collection was supposed to be yesterday. So I don't know if it got extended. I know Toys for Tots has a deadline when they have to have their stuff in so they can do their distribution.
And that they're doing their distribution of the Manchester.
There's a very service, very strong service orientation to our schools and our, our student population. And I think Campbell especially, and Campbell Athletics, I mean, last year, a couple of things that they did, but I can't recall off the top of my head what they were, that were related to, to service. I'll have to go back and check.
Car wash. Was the car washed, Jimmy?
Oh, yeah, the fundraiser, the fundraiser for cancer back in the fall was one. Yeah. I thought there was another one. Yeah. I want to know if I can have statistics on the varsity basketball players and who the best and the worst foul shooters are.
Well, I, I kind of commented and nobody heard me. At 50 cents, I don't know that they'd raise enough money, because I've seen them shoot free throws.
If somebody who's a really good foul shooter and the five bucks a free shot, a free throw for a 90% with $450?
Yeah, that would be good.
That would make one boy pay for one kid's trip, I'll bet.
Any more comments?
Should I convey to the coach that you're putting five bucks on the best shooters?
Not me.
I heard a commitment out of the superintendent there.
It had a five and a zero, and I'm not quite sure where the decimal point was.
I'm hoping they can do just a flat donation, right?
I'm sure they would take it.
They would take that, yeah.
Sure they would take it.
Budget committee report?
Budget committee went fairly well on Thursday night. I didn't think there was any major, major reductions or anything. We do expect a couple of bottom-line cuts tomorrow. We are, of course, will try to argue our points against that, but we, we do believe that they're moving a $50,000 bottom-line cut on benefits. Frank has provided those of us on the budget committee, maybe you want to send it out to the whole board, Frank, the, his argument against that recommendation from the budget committee. And we'll, we'll see how that, that, that partakes, that conversation goes. And, and then the 270, 520 conversation will, Andrew will be back tomorrow. And based on the email that he had sent out to the committee, he is looking to make a $50,000 reduction on, in those line items also. So they are looking for these, a bottom-line number tomorrow. I don't, I'm hoping they'll vote that tomorrow. They are adamant that we provide them with revenue numbers, because they don't really know what other suggestions they want to go. So we need to look at our revenue numbers and come to an agreement on, on those. They also were actioning to see what the default budget was, know if that makes any difference there. I sort of told them that warrant articles may or may not be in their hands tomorrow, or Tuesday, that it may not, they may not get them until the ninth.
Right now, definitely.
I think we're meeting on the eighth, so they may not get them to the ninth. That's, I don't think they were very happy about hearing about that.
That's the last time they can vote on them too, right?
It is, because their meeting is the following week. The 16th, I believe, is when they're doing their presentation, so.
So for example, if they're going to vote on a teacher's contract, they would need it by the ninth?
Yes. I mean, you know, maybe one of those things that, depending on what happens on the eighth, that, that we may have to email it out that night to Andrew to send to the-
ASAP, because you need to give them time to-
So that they have a chance to look at it, because it is, and I'll, I'll inform them of that process tomorrow, that it is going to, you know, they have set a policy of not voting. Now, it's not a, you know, we're not governed by it, but it, they have set a policy of reviewing and not voting until the following week on things. So they'll have to figure out what exactly that process means for, for, for them.
Well, we've kind of done that too ourselves. We'd like to, you know, you're talking over a lot of details and-
In that sense. So I think that's pretty much it with the budget committee.
Well, just in terms of the, the teacher's contract, that's not something they would present at the budget hearing. It's a budget. They present the budget hearing. It says, the, the law actually says budget hearing and special warrant articles, which I think-
It's not a special warrant.
I don't believe it's a special warrant article.
Okay, so.
So, they could certain-
But they still have to vote it out for them.
Right. They would be free to vote on it after the budget, if they wanted.
But not until the liberty, really?
No, they could vote on it on the 16th.
They could vote anytime before posting date, because they could, they've revisited that, the, the 2% They could vote anytime before posting date, because they could, they've revisited that, the, the two percent reserve warrant article like three times. They revisited it after the, the budget hearing. But, so I, I understand they wanted to see it as soon as possible, but I don't believe it's something they would be presenting at the budget hearing anyway. They would be focused on what the budget is.
And any other warrant articles that the board is going to be moving that are special warrants? That, would that be, if we decide that we're going to fund the, the GMS tech teachers, add a special warrant article?
Is that cut already from the GMS budget?
Yes, that has been removed.
Is the technology budget a hole?
Yes, the technology budget held. It did not get cut at any of the schools.
So John, I, I, I trust you were going to do this anyway, but I guess I would just ask you that to convey, at least for me, that the bottom line cut, to me, just, they've already reviewed that and didn't suggest any reductions to those areas. And while that's the easy way to go, I don't think that's what I expect of the budget committee. I believe the budget committee, if they want to look at it line by line, they should look at it line by line. If they want to cut bottom line, we should've just come in and said, here's the CHS budget, what do you think you should cut from it? I mean, if they've done their diligence on the budget, which I believe they have, based on the one meeting I attended and several that I've seen snippets of.
Well, I think on the benefits, they're just, they're just using that one, they're saying, we never spend to that one. So I, I, I tend to agree with you on benefits, because I don't know where you're going to, you know, why.
Yeah, it's very difficult to do it on an individual basis there, I would agree.
But on the, on the other ones, you know, maybe they have to reopen each budget and, and.
I just think it, I just think that, you know, that.
I mean, if the school board requests that they do it that way, I'll be glad to convey that to the, um.
I think it's just an easy way, an easy way to get to a number. They think they, oh, we're just going to cut fifty thousand out of, out of conferences and travel. Well, oh, then they're going to make the argument that it's a bottom line budget, we can spend it however we want, which is true. But I think the budget committee's there. If they, if they request the detail in each line, they should be making adjustments on each line as they've done at each of the, the previous meetings.
Oh, I think Mr. Cutter will have no problems doing that, so, so I, I, he's, he's pretty much detailed it in a, in an email.
I think there are some cases where the bottom line approach can work. So for example, Mr. Cutter just threw him out of detail on the two seven two and five eighty lines. And basically, um, our budget for next year is about seventeen thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars more than we expanded last year. And it's, there's, it, it goes to so many things. One of the major things that it does is reimburse mileage at federal rates. Um, PD for, uh, secretaries, PD for all, you know, registration things. We buy two tickets to, um, the, uh, New Hampshire School Administrators Association PD at a reduced rate. And we send various people to different sessions. Um, there's forty five hundred dollars in there for WebEx training for our technology department on servers and on other things and, and, you know. And I think there's some people who are perceiving there's all kinds of, of, of perks of traveling in that eighty three thousand dollars. In, in reality, almost all of it is grunt work, PD and registrations and stuff like that. I think there are potentially seven people who would go to national conferences. Total probably two thousand dollars on average for those, depending on where they're. Yeah, somewhere in the, so of that, about, about, you know, fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars. These are the seven people who were, should be leading the district. And school districts and schools should be learning organizations. And I believe we should be, be, uh, not only encouraging, but, but mandating that. And it is in their contract, unless it's an absolute emergency. Um, but I can see a bottom line reduction, saying, you haven't spent eighty three last year. Did what you do last year meet the need? And my response was, yes, I believe so. And so I indicated that, that in that case, a bottom line reduction by the budget committee saying fifteen to seventeen thousand dollar reduction, um, and you guys figure out where it comes from is reasonable, because we're budgeting at eighty three and really don't anticipate spending that much. It's just that everybody makes, everybody budgets as though, you know, their budget's going to be high for that this year, and it never aligns that way. So I think that's one of the few cases where you can make a bottom line cut that makes sense and then just get the budget managers to manage the budget. But I agree with Mr. Miller that the vast majority of the time, especially when you get to things like salary and benefits, things that can change over time. A global reduction is based on the, the notion that there's a whole bunch of extra capacity there, and I just don't think it's there anymore. I mean, I made cuts, the, you know, the, the schools and the budget committees have brought in, I bought pretty lean budgets this year intentionally so. I made reductions, the school board's made reductions, the budget committee's making additional reductions. And I think the numbers bear out that, that, you know, in looking at things like benefits, we have historically had a significant underspend. Um, but the margin of error has been reduced in the last two to three years significantly, as we try to budget accurately and get budget managers to spend their money wisely. So I, I just don't think that the money that they think is there, uh, actually is. And we have very little margin of error. Um, with respect to, uh, warrant articles, um, I have to talk to, uh, Mr. Ley about a meeting on Thursday, January second, of the Building and Grounds Committee. We're going to put three proposals in front of them in terms of a potential warrant article at LMS and/or GMS for communication systems or, um, access control or cameras. I think the priorities are in that order, uh, communication systems, access controls, and the last priority is, is cameras. And get some recommendations from them that we'll be able to bring forward to the, uh, board meeting on the eighth for your consideration.
I'm, I'm sure that Frank would be more than happy to budget one line item for travel, if that's the way the budget committee wants to treat it.
Well, I mean, again, I think as we're going through this process, I mean, I think that, again, I encourage us, as we're going through our budget, to look at, at budgets, um, you know, to see if there are ways to make things tighter in the sense that if we're going to have a travel budget, is it something that we will administer from a district-wide perspective or not? Um, I, I guess it really goes down through the approval process. I mean, if people are, are, are getting, um, getting reimbursed for miles and, and trips and that stuff, and it's all being approved, let's say, by the principals at the schools, uh, because they get, they're the side off at the schools, well, then the budget should probably stay there. But if the side off and the process ends up going into the SAU office to get the final approval and stuff, well, then maybe that does need to be a, a district-wide expense that, that moves out of the, um, schools and moves into a district-wide expense. And I think that, that's, that's probably administrative conversation. But I think that, again, anytime we can go about tightening up our budget, um, and, and moving expenses that aren't detailed operational expenses of the day-to-day operation of the schools. So those budgets become what we want them to be, which is the educating of our kids. And we can look at the, the other things on a more of a district-wide. I think that makes sense, uh, in, in that sense.
It does concern me that some of the opinions appear to be driven by the notion that the budget managers and the superintendent and the board don't look at how money gets spent and, you know, make sure that there's a value proposition here that says, this is something the district should be doing. I can assure you that that happens at the budget manager level and at the superintendent level. And I can assure you that board members feel that it's part of their obligation to make sure the money is being spent wisely and not just spent, so.
Other than that, do you have anything from the chairman of tech? Technology report for November?
Oh, we did have a safety committee meeting that I wasn't able to attend last week. Frank, is there any update on that?
There probably is.
Okay.
I just can't think of it off the top of my head, to be perfectly honest with you.
We should probably ask Michelle, she took the minutes.
Um, I know the board discussed the loss reports like we usually do the committee. And then we discussed, um, uh, an inconsistency between the safety book, the district safety book, and those, you know, those hand charts, the flip charts that we have in every classroom.
Quick reference charts, there's, there's discrepancy in some of them. We're going to review them next, next quarter.
Sorry, I, I knew we met, and I, I could not get out of the office.
Technology report?
I actually had a couple of questions I had emailed. I wasn't sure if I emailed the whole board.
I think you did.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, so we purchased an additional server out of this year's budget? How much did it cost?
Four thousand nine hundred and six dollars and sixty four cents.
And does this have any ongoing cost, like the service contract and whatever else that we discovered this year?
It is under warranty for three years and the service contract would cut in after year three and would be about two hundred dollars a year, perhaps slightly less.
So we needed no VMware licenses, additional ones? We're just redistributing across the board?
Well, this was our first excursion into thin clients. And there's three factors that, that you try to optimize. The, the, the server capacity matches to the number of thin clients and the type of usage, and it was relatively unknown. Uh, we had a good estimate for the number of, of thin clients that we have running at LMS and the type of usage that they're getting. Um, we're finding that, that we need a little more server capacity to increase the response rate. And so this was a, a cost-effective way to, to bump that up to the, the specs that we wanted. And also do it in a, in a purchase that would allow us to also extend thin clients to some older computers that would save us some money down the road. And it was done completely within the existing budget.
Okay, thank you.
The meal time, my kids use the, uh, tickets and stuff like that. Is that a problem that is a serious? The meal time software, is that a serious issue? Like something with money or tracking or people's credit cards or whatever and that issue? I don't, you know, you guys are talking about, but you're not being specific if there's a.
Well, it's being looked into. I know Kyle has looked at it from the, uh, he's talking with the meal time people. It, it has nothing to do with payments. It has more to do with how we're storing the data and capturing the data every day.
Okay.
But credit card, people making payments credit card online, there's no problem.
Okay, so it's not a, it's not a, you know, people putting their information in and stuff like that, it's not an issue like that?
It's never been an issue.
The kids are bringing in their cards and stuff like that?
Nope.
Any more questions on the technology report? Warrant articles.
Did you, I'll, did you have a brief conversation with Kyle, um, about the, from the school board's plan? Uh, or suggestion of, of a budget plan to move forward?
Yes, I have. And, uh, we have our list of teachers that we want to pull together on the committee and get going on it. Um, that's, with a significant change to the SAU team this year, both HR director and BA. Um, I think we've done a, a good time, a, a good job first time around. I know a lot of stuff has come last minute, and I know the budget committee's a little frustrated at, at the information. But, um, learning the intricacies of both the software and the district is very time-consuming. As we've had some pretty intense negotiations as well, and it has really taxed the SAU office to, to get all of that stuff done. Uh, I'm looking forward after Christmas to, uh, the ability to direct more of my time towards strategic work and especially the technology work.
Who's our technology rep? Is it you, Dennis? Uh, warrant articles. Looks like the only change was the, the proper order on three.
I, I inserted that one because I know Dr. Carcon was talking about it, but I only put it in there just in case, in the event the board wanted it in there or you could change it, you could take it out. I just put it in there in a just in case event.
What was the?
Looks good without numbers. Looks good without the numbers in it.
No stress there.
Lot of X's.
I don't think it's going to be X everywhere, the same number.
What's the legal opinion we're reading on?
Uh, the repeal of the two thousand and three article, have not received that legal opinion yet.
Guess as far as warrants go, we probably won't know until, if we want anything else, until after budget committee, right?
Well, yeah, I would, I, based on what they've, they've, they've done so far, I don't think there's a specific warrant other than the, 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 uh, the tech teacher for, uh, the, the, uh, GMS and the, um.
Did that get removed?
That did get removed. And the, um, but a hundred percent of them said they would support it publicly, so, um, it delivered, so.
That's going to go to the Florida motion to add it back.
The, um, oh gee, I lost my, my train of thought on that, but, um, wherever I was going. But, oh, but this, the schools, we talked about that, and I think that's why you guys are meeting on the second, to make the recommendations of the, uh, for the schools, of the, you know, upgrading the safety and, and that, things like that. So, um.
If we put the halftime tech teacher on a warrant and failed, would that prohibit us from even assigning existing teachers to that work?
Uh, you'd be able to expend no funds for that purpose.
I know it's a very sideways connection, but we're talking about warrant articles. I mean, we talked about the GMS halftime position. I'm wondering about, uh, a capital reserve fund for buildings and grounds to replace the fifty thousand dollars and the, uh, recommendation potentially from the Building and Grounds Committee for something for LMS and/or GMS, uh, safety and security. And, uh, on that note, Frank, did you want to update the board on this GMS boiler situation?
Yes. We had, um, well, a situ, we have a situation with the boiler at GMS. We had about, two weeks ago, um, this is very untechnical discussion of what happened with one side of the boiler. Uh, it's comprised of about five pieces of steel that come together to make the side. In between each of those pieces of steel is like on a, your oven at home, there's an insulating, uh, piece, almost like a piece of rope.
Uh, fiberglass type oven.
Fiberglass, again, it's a non-technical, it's a BA trying to explain something. So what happened is a piece, uh, of that insulation deteriorated to a point where it, it just literally disintegrated and caused, let's see, too much air, uh, to be going on. Uh, so the, the boiler isn't running as efficiently as it should, and obviously it's not real safe to have a hole on the side. So, uh, I was there Monday morning.
An excellent non-technical discuss.
I told you, I gave it a warning. Yes, I gave it a warning right up front. This is a non-technical.
The whole vision of a flame blowing out the side of a boiler.
Yeah, you can imagine. When Dave's got the, he's got the, uh, fire extinguisher right next to it, um, so it's been, it's been shut down at night.
It's not just aesthetics.
Yeah, it's been shut down at night and it, um, the superintendent's explanation to me was it supplements, it really works in tandem with the, with the new boiler that was put in a few years back. Um, so without both of those boilers working, probably, uh, we'd be in trouble bringing the heat up, especially when we had some of the temperatures at minus two, three, four degrees. So to bring this to, uh, to today, um, Honeywell, we're waiting on a quote from Honeywell. And, um, they weren't getting as, uh, back to us as, as quickly as maybe we liked. But we, we kind of put the squeeze on Honeywell a little bit, and parts have been ordered. And they will schedule up the work during vacation week. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that, um, this stays online between now and through Friday. We have no reason to think that it won't, um, so long as we.
Pulling three thousand dollars from each school to pay for that? I mean, I don't know what the cost is, but the, doesn't each school have three thousand dollar boiler repair?
Uh, no, I, I don't know.
It's got some amount in each school. I thought it was fif, it used to be fifteen thousand. It may be down from fifteen. It was fifteen spread across the three schools.
It's around thirty-two hundred dollars to.
Assuming they can go, they go in there and they don't, there's no, no surprises.
Right.
It's going to come in at around thirty-two. But if that system is a repetition of the sequence of plates and seals, and if one seal disintegrated and blew, it wouldn't be unusual for somebody to come in and say, uh, this wasn't an accident. So we'll, we're hoping that, that, uh, we'll be able to get everything where it needs to be with just the thirty-two hundred dollars.
Is there any money left in our capital reserve fund?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, very little. Not enough to cover.
Not enough to cover, yeah.
Right, right. And again, I don't think you'd want to move any money out of the capital reserve account right now, because obviously we're getting close to mid-year. We're looking at. Understanding certain appropriations, so we'll find the money, I think, in GMS's budget to do this.
Excellent.
Brian says, "Sounds like a student activity."
Don't get me started on that.
Can we have the student council do a fundraiser for the boiler?
You have fundraisers to heat the school?
GMS, hey, we want to test out that group real quick. You need a fund for your heat.
I heard you guys ran out of oil too over at GMS.
Okay, now that you brought it up, I wasn't going to bring that. So part two of the story is... I came in the other morning and the superintendent informs me that he received a call from Dave at GMS about the boiler. So my first thought was the boiler didn't bring us till the end of the week. And the superintendent continued to inform me that we actually ran out of oil.
Well, it makes the fixing the boiler less important.
When Dave...
Can't run it.
Dave called our vendor for delivery. They said, "Oh yeah, you're scheduled for tomorrow." And we said, "Well, we need it today." But in talking this through, if you think about it, that boiler was not running as efficient as it should. It was grabbing more air. And I came up with this and I'll take credit for this because again, my science class in the seventh grade, more air in there, the flame isn't burning as cleanly as... So I'm assuming what happened is, again, we had low degree days because the weather has been colder. And with that boiler running at less than where it should be in efficiency, we probably burnt up a lot more oil than we maybe should have been.
So now with it shut down, does that mean certain sections of the building are not being heated or it's just can't get up to the proper levels overall?
Probably the latter. But it's... They're bringing it back online in the morning sufficient enough time that the building is heating up to where it needs to be and should be. It's cool.
Kids are wearing gloves and hats and coats.
With the main boiler going all by itself, Dave felt it in that cold snap that we've had lately. The main boiler itself could keep the temperature in the building above the freezing point so we wouldn't... Because I'm sitting there getting this phone call at 9:30 at night going, "We're out of fuel. We have no..." And if the temperature drops too much, we're not going to get a $3,000 bill. We're going to end up with $70,000 to replace frozen pipes that broke. And he assured me that the other boiler by itself could keep the temperature in the 50s. That's not acceptable for students during the day. So I came in the next day and started looking at these emergency plans on double shifts at the high school. And I'm very glad that we've not had to investigate that any further.
All righty. Budget recommendation to increase for transportation and water.
In your packet, you did receive recommendation as requested on the cost exposure on the potential increase for First Student on bus transportation. And you also requested cost increase on the water appropriation should it go up to the, as it is today, the 12.2%. We'd already increased it by 2%, so we're bringing it up an additional 10.2%. And the recommendations on the bus, we provided with the number. I think we were looking at 15%, but I believe through the chair you had requested also the 20%. So that on the right-hand column would require the increase to the budget to meet that potential renewal of the transportation contract for one year.
So you need a $71,473 increase?
Well, if we went up... So let me just understand. If we looked at 10, really that would be 13? Because the three is already baked in? Or are you undoing the three and saying just 10?
No, no, I'm making the adjustment up to.
So the three is there, then you're adding 10?
Correct.
So it's a net of 13?
Correct.
Okay. I don't think 10% or 13% is enough. And as I said before, I would be far more comfortable moving a decrease of this line if we could at deliberative rather than trying to increase a line.
Or, you know, the other thing is not increase it, but try to figure out how to pay for it because the only way to make up such a number is to squeeze the supplies and the stuff that we're doing for our students, which is, you know... You know, I don't think this should be on their backs. I don't think that's... It's their... This isn't their fault. This is the cost of running the district and putting our schools' kids to school. I mean, I think that... Personally, I think we should be moving to 20% number.
So I was going to say, I think 20% is more realistic.
And because the idea is that if you had to go to the 25%, then you're really going to examine the high school bus process and that. But if you go with 10 or 15, you are making a commitment to change the high school process because, you know, 20 or 25%, again, I don't believe it's a correct process is to impact the rest of the budget. Because of a process that we don't have any control.
I mean, plus based on the fact that you're looking at $100,000 bottom-line reduction in the budget from the Budget Committee. And if you go with a lower number, I mean, that's just another squeeze that we didn't anticipate, as you said, John, having to find. And we know we're limited in where we can find that money.
Yeah, again, it's one of those things where if the warrant and the process hadn't become so crazy around that warrant article last year, money would have been in that account to handle these types of issues. And which is what exactly other towns throughout the state of New Hampshire who did pass their warrant articles online and that are not having issues on that because, you know, they understood that this is what the savings was. It wasn't creating a fund for the school board to just reach in and spend money on, which I believe it was being portrayed as, but an opportunity for unanticipated expenses such as these that we can't control so that we could then reach into that and do the process in a more controlled fashion as the town does, so...
Can we just have a little discussion? I know when Mr. Markowitz first brought this forward, we talked about a 25% increase. We budgeted three, so the question is, how much more do we need? There are two factors that we still have some control of. One of them was Mr. Markowitz's conversation about how can we work with First Student if we end up having to go with them to try and reduce their costs? Can we work with them to store buses here, that sort of thing? Frank, could you just take us through that conversation?
Well, I mean, that was... Part of the conversation we've had, I've had with First Student is obviously, they explained to you initially, the overhead should certain things happen. It's a big facility that First Student maintains in Salem, I believe. And part of the conversation, we just threw it out in discussion, was if we were to locate a in-district storage facility or barn or just a parking lot with a shed, could we have that discussion with them so that we would actually have the 11 buses that were required to service the students of Litchfield right here in Litchfield? So that's... And I have had some other discussions with other folks in town about that. And they're just preliminary if we, in fact, the most ideal place would not be storing them here at a school because of some of the obvious things, that the attraction of having kids around the school and a bus at the school. It's just sometimes you get vandalism and things. You don't want to try to locate away from the schools at a separate location. So we had had some conversations with town, with the town and it's certainly an option that we could pursue if in fact First Student does have interest in maintaining the relationship with the district next year.
Frank, is the assumption a locket compound or just a parking space?
Excuse me, ideally would be gated. And again, it's something that I think is feasible. It's not out of the realm of impossibility that it may require some, a few adjustments, but it's something that could happen.
I know that near my work in Hudson, it's in Hudson, but it's right nearby here. There used to be school buses that were stored in a parking lot that is gated. They no longer have those there anymore. That disappeared a couple of years ago. And I think that that parking lot is going to be cleared out this spring.
I'm just trying to figure out what the number would look like. I mean, I'm looking at the 15% increase. If that's 15% on top of the three, would be 18. If we could work with them, with First Student, if we ended up with them as our vendor, to try and mitigate some of the costs, and we do have some control because we know we may be able to cut at least one high school run. Then I'm thinking of, you know, I guess I'll defer to Frank for recommendation, but the question to me is, would the 15 on top of the three, knowing we have some things that we still control, be sufficient? Or, and if not, then I think we go with Mr. Miller's suggestion of go with a slightly higher number. And as Mr. York pointed out, then make that, make the reduction at deliberative. Assuming we can get one.
Right. I think the... There are too many variables right now that we cannot look at the guy costs. So again, I keep referring back to my original conversation with First Student that, you know, they threw out a number of 25%. Now, was that... I don't know what the intent of that percentile being brought to my attention, but there's so many variables right now that are going on that for us to put a number to it. We know it's going to be higher, I think, than 10. Is 15 okay? Probably not. I would suggest that maybe 20%. And if we needed to roll that number back through some of the cost containment that we could do in negotiations with First Student. But again, that's not going to take place until sometime... Do we delay forever?
Do we... I know we talked about... Do we know who London Dairy and Manchester, since they're the next closest towns to us, who they're using? And would it make sense to reach out to those two towns if it's different than First Unit? I noticed Wyndham has buses that say Wyndham that they park rated there.
SAU.
SAU right there on 111. So I'm backing them in this morning and stuff. So I'm assuming... I don't know who their bus company is either. I don't know if it's...
My recommendation to the district, to you folks, is... I know it's not always the most aggressive approach, but I think the recommendation for us to wait and see what happens with Nashua and that contractor would be best to serve. Again, they're going to... First Student's going to continue to serve Hudson next year. And if they do in fact win, I can tell you a couple of just sidebars to this is that some of the other big companies out there are starting to price this very differently. They're looking at hourly bids on how many hours a bus is going to be out there versus per bus as we have right now. And I can tell you that First Student is pretty quick to tell us that we have a very favorable contract. So with all things being equal, if Nashua wasn't even going out to bid, I think we'd be looking probably at, based again in my conversation with them, probably around a 10% to 15% increase.
Manchester uses the Manchester Transportation Authority, the same people that do the city buses.
Okay.
Because they've got the efficiencies of a garage and a staff. London Dairy uses Student Transportation of America, probably just the First Student. Gothstown Truck Center competitor. And I think what you used to see, Trish, was when Hudson had Gothstown as their service provider, they didn't want the buses to travel from Gothstown to Hudson every day. So they located them somewhere in Hudson. And maybe it was more than one spot. I don't... Because I'm assuming they need way more buses than we would need to cover Hudson. But they may have had some at the south end and some at the north end. I don't know. I'm just guessing that they had them for a year or two and then they... There was some issue with the contract. First Student is in there now, that's all I know.
Someone want to make a motion to increase the...
I'll make a motion to increase water by 3,346.
I'll second that.
Yeah, this takes the easy one.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Motion carries 500.
I'll move 15% based on the conversation of Dr. Cockburn and the BA of, you know... Again, I think that the... I think if we move the... You know, I'll share this document with the Budget Committee. Maybe we can send it out tonight to Andrew and... You know, I think they'll probably want to pick a number. You know, I think if we pick 71,473, I think it's just as close as any other number. I don't, you know, we don't really have an option, but we don't have an option to say it's not going to do something. And so I think inaction is probably the wrong process there.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
I actually think you're low. Given the $100,000 we're looking at next, potentially losing... I don't know where we'd make up another $30,000 right now.
So I think we're about going 20 and coming down after it's needed.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean that we can't discuss moving it up either. I mean, you're saying... We're saying that, you know, it would be the easier way to do it, but it doesn't mean that we can't move it up.
It's much easier to move it down than to move it up.
Yeah, it is. That's true. There's no doubt. Have we heard anything? Brian, have you heard anything more from Nashua about their process of what they think it'll...
They weren't going to know anything until sometime in January. I mean, we can check back.
That's going to be the problem is we're not going to know in February. And then we're going to be locked one way or the other.
I'm thinking you could twist people's arm and get them to vote for a reduction at deliberative.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the big key is it gives us six weeks to... Six, eight weeks to continue the process and maybe it's worth the call to, you know, the company out there.
If nothing else, I'll call them.
Nothing else to see what they... What their quote number would be. At least it gives us an idea that say, "Okay, we're in the ballpark between these two. We have a written proposal that says X, so we're expecting..." Since First Student knows everything, they'd probably match it, I would imagine, that they'd be able to match it because prices are fairly standard for both of them.
I'll see if we can get more specificity around their timelines in Nashua so that we can have a better idea of when we'll know what we'll know. And then we'll make a decision from there.
You don't think it's wise to just ask Gothstown to give us a quote on our standard system?
They're not going to give it to you without an RFP. I mean, there's a fair amount of work on this that they've got to do to figure out. I mean, they'd have to look at the routes and... Somebody's going to spend some time to come up with and crunch the numbers. I'm going to commit a motion to amend John's motion to 20, from 15 to 20%.
I'll second.
Just knowing the way these things go, I just... The 20 plus the three puts us in the ballpark of what they said of a max of 25. I kind of view it like the health insurance. We budget the GMR. They kind of gave us an unofficial GMR of 25, so we're pretty close to it. And if we have... If we can come down, I think it's great to show up at deliberative and come down. It's really hard to show up at deliberative and say, "Well, we really tried for 15, but now we want to go up 5%." I think that's just a hard road to try to go down at deliberative. And I hope it does come down. I hope we find out it's 5 or 10%.
Well, here's the thing is, it could be at deliberative that we don't know.
Yeah.
And we reserve $100,000 for this and it turns out not to be. And it's more in that $70,000. Then what happens to those funds?
It's part of the bottom-line budget.
Does that become your year-end?
Well, I mean, it's one of those things where, you know, the school board needs to make a decision at that point in time that says, you know, "Don't expend those dollars and we're going to return it to the taxpayers." I mean, that... There'll be a school board that'll need to make, probably make that direction and give that direction to the...
I mean, I think when it's earmarked for something like this, I think you can say, "We'll make every effort to return any excess." I don't think you can say, even to John's point, you don't know what happens over the span of the year. If you have to go out and expend money on something that wasn't in the budget...
Boiler.
I mean, that's a small...
Well, that's not...
That's a small thing compared to, you know, something like... I'm looking at, you know, like the fire panel. We didn't really expect to have to change the fire panel out last... We didn't really expect to have to change the fire panel out last year. And I'm not, I'm not advocating that we up it because of that, but I'm just looking at the entire budget picture where they're looking at cutting $50,000 from travel and they're looking at cutting $50,000 from salaries and benefits. And based on Dr. Cochran's statement that there's not a lot of wiggle room in salaries and benefits now, if, if we do the, if we do the 15 and it comes in at the 20, that's $30,000, we're going to ask Frank to go find in the budget somewhere. And we know what the discretionary spending lines are.
They're not much.
Yeah. Supplies. You know, you might, you might look at, you know, staff professional development, you might have to look at especially given if they're, if the travel is cut back.
20, he may still have to go look for $30,000 if it goes up to 25. Be a lot easier trying to find 30 than it is 60.
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
Frank's not, is he?
Yes, thank you.
Frank's, it could be a lot easier to find zero to have it actually be accurate, but-
That comes from my seventh grade math class.
I was next door to the science class.
And I respect the fact that First Student just doesn't know. And I mean, we're, we're asking them to give us a number that they're clearly not comfortable giving.
Well, we know if the, if we push in the number, as I said, would be 25% because in reality, that's the cost it's going to be because they're going to be moving buses from their Salem location if they're not in Nashua because that's their, that's their other location. And, and that would mean, you know, to be here to pick up, you know, leave from Salem with a bus means that bus is leaving about quarter of six. To be on site here by 6:30 to begin to doing the-
Oh, they're, the bus runs start at between 6:00 and 6:30.
Oh, do they?
I know when, when I'm going to work, depending upon when I go.
Well, it's true. They are dropping off at five minutes to seven over here.
They're not making, you know, five stops for the high school. They're making, you know, they're going all over to pick up kids and then, and then we know they have to be here early to drop off to go make the LMS run.
They're normally, was it either, I think it's 7:05 they drop off and then they go pick up-
They gotta roll for the next.
The LMS kids.
Yep.
I think they get a break between LMS and GMS for five or 10 minutes before they start their route.
It's, it's pretty tight right now, so. And then, and then you're looking at the fuel surcharge for all the miles driven back and forth to Salem. Cause if they charge you the fuel surcharge, it's per gallon.
They will.
So you're, you're going to burn what, three or four gallons in a bus between here and Salem, one way probably. So.
Any more discussion?
I know Trish doesn't like it.
I'm just very, I'm just very uncomfortable with that number. It's just-
I don't, I don't, I really don't like it, but-
A lot of my defined events.
I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying.
All in favor of the 20% amendment? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Staying? Motion carries 410. So that was the amendment to vote on the whole thing now?
No.
Okay.
To the chair, would you like me to email that to Mr. Cutter for tomorrow night's discussion?
Yes, please.
Yeah, that one queued up.
That queued up.
That's right, you're going to be sending the next one out there.
It was just ready for the swing. Got it. Thank you.
Would have been more work to not email it.
Exactly.
Default budget second revision. That we're up to?
Uh, yeah, revenue.
Did I skip one?
No, default is before revenue.
Yeah, oh, yeah, default before revenue. We don't need to approve this today, do we?
No.
Okay.
I just, I, I did tweak it a little bit based on the discussion we had at the board level. Mr. Borg had suggested that the, the increase to the water utility be included in the default. And I took that to mean also that other utility increases that we budgeted for the 2% should also be increased in the default. Other than that, it's pretty, it, it pretty much remained as we had presented to you last meeting.
So is the bargaining course reimbursement, that $900, is that contractual or what is that difference?
I'm sorry, where is it?
Yeah, that's the, in the teacher's contract.
Teacher's contract, alright. The $900.
Whether, whether a new contract passes or not, the clause or the old one.
Now, the curriculum review schedule, should that be in the default?
It's a plan that was adopted by the board and then funded by the taxpayers at one point. The curriculum review cycle, which is the textbooks. Why, why is self-funded up?
Across. That's neutral though, so it doesn't matter, right?
It's not a new, you can't put a new program in.
Even if it's self-funded? You actually increase the bottom line, right?
So what happens if the default budget goes in and they're self-funded then? How does that work?
You have to be under the number.
Well, what's, it's the current year appropriation though. What's the current year appropriation? It's not 67, it's 90,000, right?
I don't know.
Assuming it's 90 because we already approved across, right?
The, the current year appropriation for self-funded is, is the 67107.
How are we doing?
Is that your question?
Yeah, how are we doing, how are we funding lacrosse this year then?
No, it's last year's appropriation you're carrying forward. So it's this current year.
Right. Lacrosse's first year is 2015.
Yeah, but we're spending the money this year on lacrosse. I mean, they're going to play in the spring, right?
Yeah, 2014.
That's true, I'm sorry.
But it wasn't, if it wasn't in the-
Wasn't in the original appropriation, it's a program that you folks just adopted. And again, it being-
How do we spend that money then? Can we? Even if it's self-funded?
As long as we stay under the, the total gross appropriation, you're okay. If you're going to go over, you'd have to hold a hearing and accept the funds and then overexpend.
And that's the argument with Budget Committee because they don't understand.
Oh, pulling it out, you mean?
They're saying pull it out, well-
Then you can't spend it.
The bottom basic premise is if we do not have the approved appropriation by the voters at the time-
You can't spend it, yeah.
You can't spend it.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't think the 23666 should be there.
Okay.
Unless it's, I mean, just my opinion, you know, the board can certainly say that, that they believe it should be there.
And what was the $23,500 reduction on data communications and telephones?
I think that's the new contract.
Yes.
Is that the new contract?
From Paytech to whoever we went to.
Fair point.
Fair point.
And all the utilities numbers are basically what utilities are telling us the cost of doing business next year is going to be, right?
I don't think it matters. Well, so I'm going to say that, you know, that you can argue that it doesn't matter and you can argue that it's part of defining the healthy school environment under ED 306.
That's what a lawyer tells us, right?
That's what Gordon says. It'd be nice to get him to say it again. That's what he believes.
That's a good point.
That's the way the court would interpret it.
If we think this is going to be our final one, we should probably have Gordon review before we vote at least.
We can do that. Sure. I will, based on your vote, the seat, send it up.
Well, I think we wanted to look at it before we vote on it. And why is athletic officials up? 24, 29?
Lacrosse.
Lacrosse, yeah, probably the same number.
We probably don't want to do that either.
It shouldn't be. Cause the, the 90s in self-funded included all the officials. So it shouldn't be in the-
Oh, yeah, that's true. There shouldn't be.
Yes, you should probably flatline that one too. Game official.
Well, there was a new contract that came to us that said the cost for officials went to X. So it was a contract. It went from $60 to $66, right?
Oh, okay.
And that was a contracted cost.
As long as there's a contractual-
Well, I mean, I don't know if it's a contract with CHS and, and the officials, but the officials said, your, your price for referees now is $66. I don't know if there's a signed document on that.
Whatever association those officials belong to, if they get a price increase and you're having, for instance, a soccer and you need two officials, that's the, that's your cost. So you, you could say that's contractually, that's the cost of the district. We can't have one less or say we only want an official for three quarters of the time. So that's what I mean, that, you know, again, the-
NHI sets official rate.
Yeah. And then they just tell us.
There are as many interpretations of the, I would say, but, but when I put it together, I have put it together in the past, it's how can we run the same, provide the same services, do the same thing on a safe school, silent school, other transportation as we, we need to for next year? Some will say it's the same budget as this year, but if we held that premise, we couldn't do that.
And the out of district tuition, we, we have a $200,000 reduction in that line item in our budget this year?
Out of district?
Mm-hmm.
You do?
From the 510, so we, we've made, made, is that, we've made those major changes?
Same argument that if it's an ADP-driven service requirement, if it's taken out of the equation, student age is out, moves out of district, is back in district, we would make that adjustment on the tuition.
What's the non-sped transportation increase?
I was just going to ask. 55805, 10%?
Looks like just 10%, yeah. We should probably, you probably have to pull that out, right? Cause we don't know. There's no contract, right?
Where is that?
I just have to get up the spreadsheet. I'll be within a minute on that.
This is again, one of those problems where at times, you know, you could rush to make a decision. Then get a contract, protect yourself, or put in what you think would be fair and equitable. But I understand fair and equitable is not the decision here, so.
The law's not very good at fair and equitable.
Yeah, it's the flaw of the system, so.
That's all of the transportation.
That's all what?
All other transportation.
Okay. But that, is that, the 55 was just 10, a 10% gas, is that what it?
Yeah, there's a, there's a gas clause in there, escalation clause in there, and there would be other, I'd have to look at the breakdown of that to be honest with you. I don't have the exact breakdown. What, what composes that? I can get that for you though.
I don't know about all the utilities and everything, because we had the discussion last week that it was more, as John was saying, and I agreed with John for once in a while, that it was a freeze. So it was a freeze either for reduction or increase. So.
Well, that's why I said, I think maybe that's one you want the attorney to weigh in on and say.
In the past, attorneys said that it's part of providing a healthy, like, environment that we're required by Lotto.
We'll have to heat the schools, we have to turn the lights on. Have hot water, running water. So.
I think we just ask him again to reaffirm what his opinion is on-
Was electricity supposed to be going down quite a bit?
Yeah, do we have confirmed pricing on these things or is this just a typical cost of-
Current pricing for-
For utilities?
It's only, it was only like $14,000.
We don't do a multi-year contract.
So, so how did you come up with this increase on them then?
What did he cut, guys, on the?
There's all kinds of opinions out there. We do utilize a service that gives some, gives us some projections.
We utilize, are there any energy buying group?
The, the Budget Committee made a cut on the GMS electrical budget last week based on that contract that we had a change. And Bill said it was, I think that, was that a $10,000 cut or is that a $3,000 cut? Cause I-
I think it was 10. I think it was 8, 8 or 10,000 dollar cut. He felt that the payout-
Cause there's a contract, he says it's expiring, which if it is expiring, you probably need to reduce that.
Well, he did reduce it, but-
No, but I, but do you have to reset, do you have to reduce it in the default budget because it was a contract that was expiring?
We're not reading that it's, we've asked, I think that's with PSNH, they're actually going to come in and review that with us. We're not reading that it, we're, we're completed that obligation. I think that's where, that's what I told Bill, but he cut it anyways.
For the lights?
I, I did not think that GMS was 38 months. I thought the, the lowest one we had was, was, was around 60 months.
Is that one was 48?
They had one a little shorter term than that, yeah. And I think that was, I'd say that was LHS.
Well, GMS had the shortest turnaround. CHS had the highest turnaround.
Longest.
Yeah, cause it's more building, more-
Do you know when you're meeting with PSNH, will that be before the ninth?
I don't know.
It'd be nice.
It's up to them. Well, I know it would be nice, but I'll tell them I won't pay my bill. They need to get a talk.
Yeah, we'll pay the bill, we just won't give them that little bit of extra that they want to recoup.
Well, the other thing is that if-
For the vote of the school board, I cannot pay.
It would also be nice to be able to go back and say to the Budget Committee that this reduction, you know, we had PSNH in and had a conversation with them and reviewed this information with them. And this is what it, this is what it should be.
I agree. That would be nice.
In the, the reduction, the E-finance, is that that part of the contract you canceled? And I know you have, on the, on the second page, you have the numbers you have there are the school board recommended operating budget. Do you know what the number is that based on the Budget Committee's recommendations, what that is now?
I do not have that tonight. I was working on it, didn't, didn't complete it. I'll have it for you tomorrow night though.
Cause I'll need that to move it forward as a number tomorrow.
Need what?
The bottom line budget to move forward. I'll need that number tomorrow for the Budget Committee.
Which number?
What number? I'm confused. Well, they vote the bottom line budget. I'll need to know what the bottom line, after all their reductions and things tomorrow.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the default budget.
No, 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 I'm actually, I'm, on, on the second page, you have the school board 2015 funded 10 recommended operating budget.
As a comparative to the default-
And my question is, is-
As a comparative to the default budget.
Right. And my question is, is where does that stand? What is that budget number today based on the cuts that the Budget Committee has made?
Budget Committee's not done, so I wouldn't have that.
But you made the cuts that they made, so you're on the last page.
I have a subtotal, but it's not complete yet. It's not, they haven't made the cuts to district wide yet.
No, but I, I understand it, but they, based on the cuts they have made, you do have a number.
Yeah, you said you have a running subtotal, right?
I have a number.
And I was just asking what that number was.
I'll have it for you tomorrow evening. I don't have it up right now.
More than last year.
More than last year. No, I would think it's at least less than last year. No, I would think it's less than last year.
Is it?
Not done.
It's more now, after we just added a hundred thousand dollars.
I'd like to know what the.
They haven't approved that yet.
Well, they haven't approved it yet, so. Uh, I'd like to know what the, what the difference is between the, the budget and the default budget is. What, you know, right now, we're looking at a quarter of a million difference, or a hundred and seventy thousand dollar difference. And I'd like to, I don't believe that's the number, based on the reductions that have been made so far. I mean, I think they've made almost a hundred thousand dollars in reductions so far, so.
They, they have made seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars in ten cent reduction to date.
To date, okay.
Soon to be a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in reductions.
Then, and then just gonna switch.
And they go up a hundred and one thousand.
We're gonna move from one to.
You guys can make it easy, just motion for a thousand dollar increase in transportation, and it's a wash.
And we will have to figure it out.
Any more questions on the default budget? All right. Yes, I guess someone wanted him to make those changes, and then have Gordon take a look at it.
Yeah, because I will have it for the eighth.
Cool, thank you. Revenue projections.
This looks markedly better than last time.
We sharpened the pencils, if you will. Let me just get that up for you, hold on one second. A couple of things that changed. Sorry, my computer. The local revenue is, is pretty close to what was presented last time.
What's the other local sources for ten thousand?
That would be rental of buildings. In this case, when you look at your revenue, other local sources coming in is the LGC. It would be things that, for the most part, it's, the building, rental, rental of the building is other local revenue.
I didn't know if that was some fraction of the bus pass or parking lot revenue.
Not yet.
From the discussion last week, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, if we were to bring that in, that would have its own script. We wouldn't put under other local revenue, it's kind of the catch-all, the things that aren't budgeted on a local level. So that pretty much has stayed the same. The major change in this next section down is state, revenue from state sources, school building aid, and you'll notice that is the same number as this year. So the good news in my discussion with DOE is that your school building aid lags behind one year, basically, on your, on your step down of your bonds. So next year, even though we're substantially reducing the obligation of the, of the bond payment, you still, as a district, we are gonna receive the same amount this year. It, it will go down in two thousand sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, to approximately, she didn't have the exact figure, but she said that she thought it was gonna be somewhere around one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, so.
Even though we don't have a payment that.
Even though you don't have a payment that year.
We're making money, actually.
But it will, even though you don't have a payment, we will be projecting it.
Only because you weren't here somewhere down the road, we made a payment and didn't get anything from the state, I'm sure.
Well, they, he explains to me, he says, the first year.
It was all us.
They don't, they don't get anything the first year, so they start a year.
Well, I think the problem is, they don't start paying until you occupy the building, and you typically start pay, your bond starts when you start construction. So you're gonna pay that first year before you get to use your facility. I think that's, the state triggers on it, that you finished construction and you moved in, now we'll pay our building aid.
You probably had an intermediate bond, it's called, it's basically a bridge loan, that when you take out.
Then it converts.
Then it converts to the, once you get your C O U.
So we, we paid whatever interest or whatever.
You already had some debt service on that first year, so. CAT aid is, is also, I had discussion with the director of special services, and she and I determined an, an increase to that. The district had a substantial submission of catastrophic aid request to the DOE. However, we, we took that figure of this year, it was somewhere in the vicinity of nine hundred thousand. It was nine oh two two A, to be exact. But in our, we go through, we look at the population changes, if you will, and the, on those students that were eligible for us to process through CAT aid. As you've heard from the director and from the superintendent, there's been some changes to that population, age outs, students being brought back in district, provided services in district versus out of district. So we projected about a substantial reduction of that, almost fifty percent, on what we projecting, we anticipate receiving this year. And then, as you know, the state has not fully funded their obligation on the CAT aid over the past few years, so we're projecting about a seventy percent. So again, if it holds to a student population, this is always a difficult number, because it depends, again, on student population remaining the same between now and September. So we changed that number, that's a substantial change.
Is that the three fifteen, seven ninety-eight?
Yes, sir. Yep.
And you changed it to two sixty-six?
No, opposite.
No, we, we changed it up.
It went up forty-eight.
Yeah, we moved it up, forty-eight thousand.
That's a good line.
That's a good line. Uh, vocadis.
That, that's where the big change came, was in the state stuff, I think. Because we were negative two hundred thousand or something.
Yeah, we were, but again, as I mentioned, it was preliminary, because we hadn't had discussion yet with DOE.
No, clearly.
Yep. So, yeah, the major change shift is in from the state sources. We did make a, a change in the federal program grants and, and the disabilities grants, that's your IDEA and your, your Title II As. Basically, I did have a discussion with, again, the director of student services, as well as the director of curriculum development, and I think it was agreed, as you know, those, those grants typically aren't brought into the district and notified to the district sometime in, in April, May. So we won't know for fiscal year fifteen, for a few more months now, but we're, we're gonna put in the same level, we're gonna level fund those two until we, we get the actual amounts from, when the grants are approved. Medicaid distribution, I also increased that a little bit. Historically, the, the district has run, again, that's a function of, of student population, specialized student population. The Medicaid reimbursement used to include transportation, and there's been some shifting of that regulations, so that some of the reimbursables, if you will, associated with Paris, riding on buses with students, may not be reimbursable through Medicaid any longer. So we're gonna, even though we increased it, we brought it down a little bit from historically where the, where the district has had in the past, so. And the education grant remained the same, we're projecting somewhere approximately a ninety-eight percent of current year education grant coming in, the adequacy aid. So the, the summary that I provided to you at the bottom as well, that's total off funds, but then what are those funds that impact the general fund only, fund type ten? So you can see that there's, there's actually been only a seventeen thousand dollar change from this year's projection to two thousand fifteen.
Excellent. So these numbers are good enough, we can forward to the budget committee tomorrow?
If you as a group committee like them. I think, again, the, the two areas that we were unsure of is, is the grant and the school building aid and, and the CAT aid. We, we have a really good handle on those right now, we feel okay with it.
I like these numbers. You comfortable sharing these numbers with the budget committee tomorrow?
Yeah, I think that, the school board, right, okay with that, yeah. Now I would email those out to Andrew today.
On his way.
Our adequacy funding is at ninety-eight percent of this year's.
Yes.
Last year, I think, we ended up at ninety-eight five, but we're not seeing the same trending up this year in our numbers during the year. So that, that number's pretty close.
Right.
It's conceivable that if we, if we just stay where we are, we'll come in slightly less than that. But two percent is a, is a state average decrease.
Right.
So, so based on this, the taxpayers, because I think our budget right now is right around nineteen thousand, six, six fifty-six.
You wanna do a million or a thousand?
Million, excuse me.
Just making sure, John.
Nineteen million, so.
Make sure you motion the right amount.
Their number is, their number right now to the taxpayer is right around thirteen million dollars. Is that what you would be? That would be the difference between the six, 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 five, nine, one, nine in our budget would be.
Your budget excluding your food service.
Food service, right.
And your grants, right.
Right.
Yep.
That's the case, how come non-funded, self-funded isn't on here? Or am I not seeing it?
It's on the very top.
Student activities.
Yeah, student activities, yeah.
We just got a different name, so we can.
So we can confuse you.
Obfuscation.
That's the department, they, they make you, they give you those numbers, so you can't mess with them, and you can't mess with the names, but that is, that is your self.
Self-funded, yes. Excellent. Any more questions on this?
I'll forward it to the budget committee.
Thank you, done. NHSBA resolutions. Do we need to vote on all of these?
It's either tonight or next time.
You could take the, well, I think the.
I didn't see any major changes from last year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you took the, the continuing ones, because they aren't changed, and voted on them as a whole, and then voted on the proposed ones separately.
And we basically are pulling ourselves out of this organization, so I don't really know if the board needs to.
Can we abstain?
Stain from every vote. The vote was three hundred twelve to one hundred one.
I don't think we even have a school board member assigned to this, right?
I think John said he wanted to go on.
Was it you, John?
I, I looked at it, I read, I read the things, I didn't volunteer to go up in January.
You're there.
I volunteered to go up in January.
Because when you said, look at it.
It'll be one of those things where, depending on the schedule, I'll, I can tell you the Wednesday before.
Well, I think the school boards association does do good work. Given that they represent a large number of school districts, which sit across the entire range and spectrum of positions on most of these, it's almost impossible to get a consensus. I'm not sure the value of the, of the vote, it's probably, from my perspective.
I mean, we, there's, unless, my, my feeling on this, unless there's something we one hundred percent totally disagree with, and we wanna make a statement on that, that we should just, you know, move forward, because again, we, we removed the funding out of it, so it won't be there. And whether or not somebody is there in January.
You can even just go to the sessions in the morning, go to the work in lunch, and then leave.
Well, they're done by one o'clock, I mean, they're, you know, it, I mean, I thought some of the things that they were gonna talk about were, were, were interesting, but, you know, again, is, I'm not there yet, man.
It says on my list that Brian is the ref.
Brian's there. He wants to give you a position to take on these things.
That's totally your direction, you can go or not go, I just brought it forward because they sent it to us.
How many people have opened and read it? I mean, I've read through it, so I.
It lists the agenda, but I need to do the.
There's not a lot of change.
There's, there's really not, so, I mean, I, you know. I'll make a motion that the board continues to accept the stance of New Hampshire School Board Association in their resolutions.
There's some on the Common Core stuff I'd like to.
I think John's motion died.
It died, it died quickly.
What, so Derek, what I would suggest for next meeting, if somebody wants to have a discussion.
Bring up that specific one they wanna talk about.
Bring up the specific one, otherwise, we can consider the, I mean, if you want to, or, Brian, we wanna direct Brian to abstain, because we're leaving anyway, and you'll be, you'll be ostracized, you'll be the one over there in the far corner of the room by yourself.
The relevant says aye, no, abstain.
I think that's a little more efficient way of, and then if nobody brings up something on a particular topic.
They're abstaining from all of them.
Or we can support all. I mean, I, if, my feeling is that if nobody has an issue with one, that we should just go, we should just support them as is, because we haven't really had any issues with any in the past, so. And if there is one that, that we discuss and decide to not support, then Brian will have some direction for his January meeting.
I did, I did like five aye, that gets rid of the, needing the approval if you're gonna have less than a hundred and eighty days, but you meet the hour requirement.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense, that, I mean, that.
That's what Manchester did.
I mean, you could petition them now, and I know we've done it in the past, but it just might be one of those things you can do to combat blizzard bags, if we don't wanna go forward with blizzard bags, if we can get enough hours in. I know Campbell has enough, more than enough, and I think LMS and GMS have more than enough, but don't have as big a buffer as they do at the high school.
Who knows what this legislative body will decide?
Good point.
We have a donation.
We got this last year, I think, too.
We get it just about every year, and I, it's going to be, it's a grant, it's actually a grant, and it's going to be split between math and science.
How much is it?
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars.
Split the high school or across the schools?
It's the high school.
I wanna make a motion to accept five hundred dollars from ExxonMobil?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All those in favor? Post, staying, motion carries five zero zero.
We're now on the hit list of every environmental group, because we've accepted big oil money.
We have.
Any questions on the manifest?
I did not sign one of them, so just make sure that you two guys sign.
I signed them all, so.
Okay, if you guys both sign, then we should be okay on all of them.
If you're into the input.
Oh, all right. I was not even paying attention.
Your turn.
Same person, same address. Again, I, I'd love to find out where the, where in the statute the default budget mentions same level of services. There's nowhere, nowhere in the world, except in rooms like this, does it say that, it talks about appropriations. So regardless of what it costs for the level of services, it's not what the point is. The point is, well, the same level of appropriations. So if it costs more the next year, but it doesn't fit the four things the law requires, it, it doesn't count. It doesn't matter if we wish it to count, I mean, I understand that. I deal in this myself, I have to manage a budget, and my costs go up. But I live within that budget, and something else goes. And so the argument that says that ED three oh six requires safe schools, you know, in regards of heat, we're gonna do that. There's no way we're not going to heat the building. That funds, those funds will be spent for electricity and utilities, because you're right, the law says you'll do it. So what happens then is you don't do something that's optional. So to say that we have to increase our utility costs because those might go up is true, but not in a default budget, because you'll do it at the cost of something that's optional. I hadn't heard, I, I requested last week if the default budget legal opinion was gonna be released, I hadn't heard, I hadn't seen it, so I was hoping that that's still going to be done. Huh?
We haven't asked for a legal opinion yet.
No, no, last week's.
Wasn't the budget request either, it was our impact fee request.
Impact fees, I'm sorry, yeah, it was impact fees.
Yeah, we can post that, right?
Please. The issue with the boiler, you get that way, I've had that happen myself many, many times, as I walk into accounts that don't treat their water chemicals properly. It comes from improper water chemistry, and that's what corrodes inside of a boiler, because of the harsh conditions. So there is a intensive process to keep your boiler chemistry correct, and that's a symptom of not maintaining it correctly. So I would suggest just taking a look at that. It is limited where we can find extra dollars, when, when, you know, I heard about the, you know, I was listening to the bus conversation, it's very difficult. But if you're never making a tough decision, that's what makes it, it ain't that difficult. I mean, you're looking for money, but if you don't ever take a tough decision, saying, jeez, that's horrible, I guess we might not have to do, you know, this over here, like we do in our homes and in our businesses. We have to prioritize, and if we don't prioritize, of course, it's hard to find the money. Because you don't wanna have to make that decision, I don't either on a daily basis. I had to today, I had to not do a lot of things today, because it's the end of the year, and my budget is deplete. Fortunately, in our SB two town, Senate Bill two town, we have the option of, in March, asking for supplemental appropriation. So we have a method of asking the voter, if the boiler blew in March of this year, to say, folks, we run a tight ship, you know it. I know, I know you do, the budget's tight. You come to the voter and say, the boiler blew at GMS in March, we need to repair it right now. Voters in this town are not gonna let kids go without heat, they're gonna appropriate in March the money to fix that boiler. So running lean isn't a problem, especially relative to emergency unforeseen items. They happen in every businessperson's world. There are mechanisms that the law provides for to address those. You just don't take it in case from families that need the money in their households, because they need money in case, too. The problem is, people in households don't have the option of going to ask the voter for, for more money, right? They can go ask for the bank, they can get further in debt, right? But it is the taxpayers' money, just come ask for it, and we'll, we'll provide. And I, I know the, the special fund was one of John's, you know, things that he really wanted, was to act like the town. I can't find, I found two districts in the state, and I'd love to know who else is doing it, because I wanna talk to them about how it's working. And I know John's confident that, you know, he spoke, you know, like, like it was the gospel, but Interlakes, you know, up, up in the Lakes region was, is the only one I could find that actually adopted it. So I, I'd be, I'd be very, very happy if Mr. York knows of any towns that have done that, I'd, I'd like to know what they are, so I can go talk to them. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess just quickly in response to that, I wanna kind of reiterate something that John had actually said about, Jason said, you know, we have, we have to work hard to make hard decisions, I think John said it quite well in that. We are making a hard, we're not making a hard decision here, but we don't, we don't wanna balance maybe a hundred thousand dollar loss in the, to pay for the buses on the backs of the kids' education. And we're making the decision to put the hundred thousand dollars in our operating budget, so that the kids' education in the schools don't suffer. So, and that's, that's our proclamation as a school board, and that's what we're choosing to do. And with that, we need a short non-public for, so we can get a motion to enter a non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three eleven for, A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the discipline of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him, unless the employee affected one has a right to a meeting, and two, request the meeting be open, in which case, request shall be granted. B, the hiring of such person as a public employee, or C, matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting.
So maybe. Absolutely.